Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of November 18th, 2024. This meeting is being held in both a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request forms to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when your item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand and I will call you in turn so we can make our discussion clearer for the record and for the public. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Peake?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Norm, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise, face the flag, and now say your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lave off!
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with item 4A continued to... Is there a date certain on that?
Yes, it'd be January 23rd, 2025, which, just as a reminder to the public, will take place on a Thursday evening.
Thursday evening, okay. And item 4B continued to December 2nd, 2024.
Okay. Do we have consensus for that?
I will second that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Ceremonies, we don't have any ones, so we're going to move on to written and oral communications from the public.
If I could very quickly give you a report on the posting of the agenda?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
It's okay. The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 8th, 2024.
So let's move on to item 2A. Do we have any speaker cards? None? Okay. Do we have any participants via Zoom?
We're bringing that up just now. We needed to do a little refresh here.
There are three raised hands versus Travis. Travis, are you there?
Yes, and I submitted a short video clip this morning that I'd like played for the first minute of the comment.
Policy dealing with code enforcement. What's supposed to happen if the code enforcement is... If there's a problem, all right? And the policy says there's supposed to be a complaint submitted on a document, and the document is supposed to have language in there that confirms that the complaint is not confidential, right? Supposed to be available for people, and it's supposed to say that on the report. They're not doing that, all right? They're not doing that. I've got a complaint somebody put against my house, all right? And I believe it's part of the same guy that called up here that, you know, was talking about what I'm doing wrong or what, you know? And I'm trying to get an answer. I've asked Trevor to take a look at the person who did it and make sure it's actually a person. It isn't just some, you know, name they made up. Can't get anybody to do anything. So if the city's not going to do something, I'm going to. And I'm going to protect my rights, and I'm going to protect the rights of some of the other residents who are going through the same thing.
Yeah, so John Mazza, you were appointed by Steve Euring. And, you know, like Euring, you love attacking people who call you out for breaking the law. You did it a few months ago at a planning commission. Do you think it's okay for Steve Euring to talk like this? Is it okay for a city council member elected by the public to say he's going to take justice into his own hands? What's he going to do to the person who made the complaint? Is he going to quote-unquote Adrian him? Is he going to yell at them or ask Kirk Cam to issue a death threat? Wouldn't it be easier for Steve to take down the illegal fence? Why is everyone who runs a foul of the MTC in Malibu a bad person or a developer? The MTC has gotten everyone fooled. Maybe it's Euring, Mazza, Drummond, Silverstein, Healy, Sampson, et cetera, who are the bad guys. The MTC is Malibu's mafia. If you need protection so you can build a fence, a deck, or a house without a permit, it's easy. Rad on your neighbors, contribute money to the MTC, and retain Frank Angel. But if you're an outsider, forget it. You'll get appealed to the City Council and Coastal, and then you'll get sued. That's what the MTC does. If you don't play by their rules, it will take you eight years and millions of dollars to sniff a permit for even the simplest stuff. There are two sets of rules in Malibu, one for the MTC and another for everyone else. It's time for them to practice what they preach. I'm done with all the threats these people make. John Mazza and Steve Euring are crooked, and Joe Drummond, who may not even live in Malibu but sits on the Public Works Commission, is a flat-out liar.
Thank you, Travis. Who do we have next?
Tom Boswell.
Tom, you there?
Tom, you're unmuted.
Tom, you there? Go to the next one and come back?
We can do that. Paul Silvestri?
Hello, Paul? Can you speak a little louder, please? We're having trouble hearing you.
Almost every single time. It's almost like she's got a special deal going on with the clerk.
We can hear you now.
I'm sure that we'll hear from her momentarily, claiming that I'm not from Malibu and I'm a liar. But the reality is, she may not actually live in Malibu, and she's the one who lied, right? We heard Councilmember Riggins ask for her, for Joe Drummond, to apologize for lying. Been a week, she hasn't done it. But here's the deal: With Tranqus Park, the record is the record. It's in writing. The MTC sued the city of Malibu in 2009. That's real. It happened. Believe it. What you should also believe is that there's a settlement in place, and that settlement is signed by the former MTC president, current City Council member who just got re-elected, Steve Euring. Steve also lied about this. He says that it never happened. Well, as far as I know, Steve and Joe went to lying school together because that's all they really do, is they lie, and they lie, and they lie. So here's the deal: Joe Drummond, who's the current president of the Malibu Township Council, kids don't do all this. Allow the kids to play, right? They could be playing sports and painting stripes on fields, all the great things that you can do in a park. We could be ready to roll in a month. There are all these kids in Malibu, and there aren't enough parks. Really, Tranqus Park is a glorified dog park at this point in time. But we have the MTC to blame, right? They signed a deed to block this. They signed a deed to make sure the kids didn't get to play games at this park. And you can blame Steve Euring and Joe Drummond. So I can't wait for Joe Drummond to show up and say again, "I don't live here." Well, I live here more than you do, Joe, and that I'm a liar. Well, Joe, I'm not. You're the one who's lying. Anybody with a Google account can go do all the research they want. They can find out that Steve Euring lied and you lied. Enough. Build that park, get kids playing today.
Thank you. Who do we have?
I'll circle back to Tom.
Tom, you there?
His account isn't allowing me to unmute him. I've never seen that before.
Okay. Is there anything we could do in the future to make sure that this seems to happen quite a bit?
In the other times when that has... When the speaker has not responded, it has been that they have not chosen to respond or have not been available by their screen at the time that they're called. In this case, there's a technical issue. This is, I think, our first situation like this?
I guess we'll move on, then. Let's go on to Commissioner's comments and staff comments. Who would like to go first? John?
Yes. Travis and Paul, your council member lost. And I just want to point out that you need to read the laws of the city of Malibu. There's a council policy, and when council policies are passed, they're passed by the full council, vetted by the Zorasis Committee, and they're published on our website. Council Policy 43, which is what Steve was referring to, says that the code enforcement officer will be... Will not be proactive. He must have a complaint, written and writing, that signed and disclosed to the person that's being complained against. It is very clear, it's in writing. You can go to the City Council, the City of Malibu website, and you can read it. That's what the law says. So it's not a situation where somebody's refusing to follow the law. It's a situation where the city is refusing to follow Council Policy 43, which is... Only can be changed by the City Council. That's a fact. You should do a little research before you speak. Now, as far as the Tranqus Park goes, nine months before the MTC signed... Before a judge came down with the final order, the City Council voted to have practice fields only at Tranqus Park at the behest of Malibu West, and Sharon Baroski made the motion to pass it, not Steve Euring or anybody else. That council passed that policy. That policy's been in place since that passed. So do a little research before you accuse people of lying. Thank you.
Anyone else? Craig, go ahead.
Joe Drummond lives in my neighborhood. I see her around often enough to not have any reason to doubt that she lives there. I don't know why anybody would think otherwise. I just wanted to say thank you to the City Council and alert people at the same time that we have an imminent PSPS, maybe as early as... Early this morning and on for a couple days possibly. But to thank the council because they are... On their agenda now coming up, they will be discussing how to make the power in this city more resilient and safe and what they can do about it and interacting with Edison and so forth. It's on their agenda, so thank you for moving forward on that. And those are my comments.
Okay. I just want to congratulate, first, the city of Malibu for approximately 80% of the people voting, which is amazing. And I want to congratulate Steve, Bruce, and Haley for becoming our new members of the City Council or repeat members. It's very important that in a small town like this, people participate and follow the reactions of the people, what they want. So congratulations to three of them, and hopefully we move forward with less trolls around. Thanks.
All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any commissioners that we should pull on the items? Okay. Okay, so I'm sorry, staff comments?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar?
I have a few.
Which ones do you want to pull?
Four questions or comments on 3B, 2, 4, 5, and 6.
I'll make a motion to approve pulling items 3B, 2, 4, 5, and 6.
Okay. And I'll second that with the amendment that we consent to the others.
And for clarification, we will need to take roll call votes on items that require a resolution, so that would be 3B, 2, 3, and 4. And I know 2 was pulled, so for 3B... Was 3B 3 on the list?
No. 3B, 2, and 4.
Okay, so 3B 3, we would need to take a roll call vote for that separately following this roll call vote. Commissioner Peake?
I was just gonna...
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I was gonna say yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair... I'm sorry, Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries on the approval of the consent calendar. And then for item 3B 2... I'm sorry, 3B 3? Right, 3B 3 has not been pulled, though.
3B 3 wasn't pulled.
Right. I'm sorry, I was having a...
I'll make a motion to approve item 3B 3.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so let's move on to 3B 2. That's an extension of a coastal development permit and a request to extend a planning commission approval for an application of a new single-family residence at 5949 Murphy Way. Do we have a staff report, or...
I don't have a staff report, but I'm available for any questions.
Yeah. So what's your question, Craig?
There's a lot of hardship here. I understand that. They've been going through a lot.
Hold on, before we go into comment, are we listening to many speakers in the public about this?
Okay, yeah. I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, you've got some slips. Okay.
All right, let's go to Steve Geldman.
And would you like to provide...
Is this for item 3B 2, or is this...
This is for 3B 2.
Okay.
If we're opening the public hearing, would you care to take disclosures from the group first?
Sure. Any disclosures?
None.
None.
None. Because it's an extension?
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, Steve Goldman.
So you actually have multiple speaker cards there. One of them is for Stephen Summers. We're just speaking on behalf of applicant for the case. So I'm Stephen Summers with Crest Real Estate Land Use Consultants on behalf of the clients, Steve Goldman here. So just wanted to... We'll be brief in our comments here. The reason for this extension is due to legitimately extraordinary personal health issues of my clients. I wanted to just read a little bit from the LCP policy regarding CDP extensions. It states that you must show due cause in order to obtain an extension, and it says due cause shall generally not exist unless the applicant has demonstrated the following: There are extraordinary circumstances beyond the applicant's control that have prevented the applicant from commencing the development, such as personal reason, including illness. That is exactly the case here. The sole reason for this extension request is due to illness. My clients, as Steve will discuss in a moment, have dealt with extreme illness in multiple instances. There's been multiple back surgeries, treatment for cancer. It has not been a fun last few years. They're longtime Malibu residents requesting approval here for this extension so that they can ultimately move along with their process in due time. I'm going to pass it on to Steve here. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Steve Goldman. We are 25-year residents of Malibu. We're both senior citizens, and as Stephen said, my wife has gone through severe medical issues, starting with disc replacement and disc fusion on two vertebrae in her back. She was diagnosed with breast cancer, had a mastectomy, and about a year ago, she had a similar issue in her neck. She had disc replacements in her neck, and just last week, she had to go undergo some follow-up injections and ablation to burn some nerves in her neck. She's sitting here. We have our medical records. We waive our rights on the medical records. We'd be happy to share all the records with the commission. When we first purchased the land, it was a two-story home. We thought everything would be great, and based on the medical condition and advice from the doctor, we really have to have a single-story home. So we went through the process for a single story. We're in the middle of that process. We've submitted all of the documents, and we're now just waiting final approval. We need this extension in order to have time to get the city to give us comments, respond to the comments, and move forward. We're ready to start construction as soon as we have approvals. It's very important to us. We want to spend our final years in Malibu. We love Malibu, and without a single-story home, we're not sure how we can do that. We ask for your consideration.
Thank you. Do you have a couple of questions, Craig?
For staff, thank you. Yeah, so I started to say, it looks like... Obviously, there's been a lot of hardship here. We're not unsympathetic. It seems like it's been like... I think I counted six and a half years already. We're allowed to do five, and it's been nine years since the original application. The issue here is about precedent, and so I would suggest... I mean, they've already used the extension on the hardship, on illness, once already before. So we're kind of going beyond the envelope here. I would suggest maybe we could go one year, and that that should be sufficient for them to get started, that otherwise, I feel like we're pushing the envelope out a little too far for future precedent.
Go ahead, John.
I also want to add that the reasons given for... It says due cause should generally not be given unless the applicant demonstrates the following in some of these. As I understand, there's been a change in ownership. Is that correct? And also, there's also been a change in design. So that adds time. And so, once we close the hearing, I am going to make a motion to extend it one year to keep it within reason. The reason why this policy came out in November 2017 was because this planning commission was backed up and is backed up to the point at which applicants had to wait too long to get in queue. And so the City Council put this policy in, and this is an LCP policy, to speed things along. And so six and a half years, in my mind, is too long. Giving a year now should, since the process is almost complete, should be adequate and final.
I have a question for staff. Do we have the... Can the applicant, because they filled out three cards, can they come up for rebuttal?
It's not a matter of rebuttal. The chair can choose to bring them forward for additional questions if you wish to.
Can I first clarify with staff? There has not been a change of ownership on this one, correct? That's a different one.
I'll let them answer that. I don't recall a change of ownership.
Okay, I'm on the wrong one.
Well, is one year okay for you? If not, can you explain why you need two years?
Yeah, so the reason that we need the full two years is because... So the changes to the plans are to make this building single-story specifically due to the health issues, to make it a home that they can actually live in. So it's not just some elective series of changes to this building. We are waiting to come back before you for the amendments to the CDP, and then we will have to go through Building and Safety Plan Check to actually obtain the building permits. I do not believe that one year will be enough time to complete all of that work.
I will personally commit to whatever resources it takes to turn everything around in 24 or 48 hours in order to get this done. And so if the city can get everything done inside of a year, but we're told by the professionals that getting through a building in safety would not be possible inside of one year.
Go ahead, John.
Did you change the footprint of the house?
We did what's called a substantial change. So we lowered the elevation. Everything is... Nothing is over 18 feet.
Substantial, sorry, substantial conformance revision that just ultimately changed the design to bring it from program on two stories to flatten it into one.
Okay, so substantial conformance.
Well, so that was originally in discussions with Adrian, what Adrian had believed it be, and then it was changed.
I have a question of Tyler. Is that what happened, a substantial conformance?
Substantial. So they were approved for a two-story home because of the accommodations for their family. They want to go down to a one-story. It's currently in application for a CDP amendment. Now, I was going to say, you can have two options. Typically, when we do a CDP amendment, it inherits the old expiration date. However, you could give them a typical three-year approval. We're pretty close. I would say probably early next year will probably be before you with that CDP amendment, and at that time, you could grant, you know, a regular three-year CDP. So if you don't want to give them the... I would agree that the two years... I would agree that the two years, if you're not going to give them that, the two years is more practical because they will not get through Plan Check most likely in one year.
I'd like to make a motion to give them the two years because, you know, there's a lot of issues that are out of their control in regards to the city being able to process.
But hang on, but I'm sorry, but he just said if we... They're going to get to the CDP amendment pretty quick. At which point, they'll have, you know...
They don't give three years automatically.
Go ahead, Skylar.
First off, I appreciate you guys sharing and being so candid with the things that are going on. I don't think that it should be our council's policy of hearing that stuff and getting to the merits of it. I think we should take our applicants on their word for that, and I apologize for you guys having to come here and do that. It doesn't feel right with me. Probably doesn't feel right with everybody else that's sitting up here. Being somebody that was on council when that policy was passed, yes, the reason for that was to clean things up and get rid of projects that were just kind of recycling in the system forever and ever and ever. This is clearly one of the reasons of how passing those kind of rules becomes difficult because we run into these situations, and I think we made allowances in there to do so. If Tyler is comfortable with saying that you think that you're going to get to this within the first six months of next year, what is... Or is there any precedent for us when we would receive that ACDP of giving them a three-year timetable on that? Because I don't want to go down the road of that, right? And then us be like, hey, that's not... That can't be a reality.
I'll look into if there's any code sections. I can't think of any at the top of my head, but I'm thinking of in cases where we do a CDP amendment for a CDP that's already approved many years ago, but it's still under construction, but for whatever... many years ago, but it's still under construction, but for whatever reason, they need to do a CDPA. In that case, you don't inherit the old expiration because that would have been years ago. So you would be given a new expiration at that time. So I think it is feasible, but I will have to double-check the code to make sure there's nothing against that.
It's all a moot point anyways, it's just giving them a little flexibility just in case the city can't.
The only point is the precedent.
As far as I know, we have never given a continuous, start the clock over, get an amendment, never.
Yeah, but we do have lots of.
Chair, real quick, this does not set precedent. Precedent is not something that happens on an approval of these, and it's very fact-specific. So I highly doubt that these same facts will come before you. If they were the exact same facts, then you may have a precedent. But that's, that's not a thing here.
But I have a question on that. We are always told that they're specific and that don't give precedent on every time I've ever asked. So a policy can't be, well, you can do it this time because it isn't precedent, because it never is precedent. And the situation is, this was applied for in 2018. If they come in and get another three years, that's 10 years?
I mean, I'm not the one to argue the merits. This is with your commissioners. I'm just stating that precedent is not.
But can you, I do not know of a single case ever in 33 years where a CDP starts the clock over when it's amended.
That's for you and the fellow commissioners to discuss. I'm just stating that there is not precedent based off this.
Just as a point of clarification, this, they are currently at a five-year point. This additional two years they're asking for would take them to seven years, which is unusual. And if you find that their health issues are extraordinary, which is up to your, a quorum of your body to determine, that would extend the life and would be the safest legal path rather than trying to come to you with an amendment on an expired permit, which the commission has historically been not particularly receptive to considering. And the reason for the length of time is because the project was appealed, so the expiration was paused and restarted when the appeal to the project was withdrawn.
To clear that up, you're talking, the date started when the appeal was pulled. So that's irrelevant as far as the time period we're talking.
So we're, we're talking about extending it from a five, from five years of approval to seven years of approval with the current proposal.
Go ahead, Skylar.
I'd like to, you made a motion, but you didn't get a second. So I was just going to make the same motion, which is going to be to grant the two-year extension based on the evidence that was presented this evening.
Absolutely, a second. I can't even believe that we're talking about this tonight. I can't believe that after what these folks are going through, that we're spending time talking about this. I know it's seven years, God forbid. I just hope she gets better. That's all anybody here hopes. It's all yours.
Go ahead, Craig.
The problem is the code because we have.
Jesus, Commissioner.
Mr. Smith, you have three more meetings, and then you can tell us from down there.
All right, John. John, okay, wait one second. Everyone, we need to practice the code of conduct. I don't want to hear any snarking back and forth between us, okay? All right, go ahead. Craig was up now.
Yeah, no, just to clarify, the problem is with the code, that you get the five years with the due cause. One of the enumerated things of due cause is serious illness, or some other things, financial hardship, et cetera. That gets you out to five years max. Where this gets hairy and weird is that suddenly we have at the end of the whole section, quote, "Absent extraordinary circumstances, the aggregate life of the permit shall not exceed five years," implying that there are extraordinary circumstances that get you to five years, and then super extraordinary circumstances that could get you beyond it. To me, that seems like the beyond five years is a Woolsey fire, or, you know, I don't know, something, yeah.
So if that was my family, and I was sitting before us right now, those would be extraordinary circumstances. And if, I'm not willing to go against that and say that that wouldn't be extraordinary for anybody in this room. I don't think that you, I, John, you know, Drew, or anybody in this room could say that that's not extraordinary and that they were planning for that, and they knew that when they went into this process, that that's what they were planning for.
And that's what's in the five year. I'd be happy to give them a one year.
Moreover, moreover, okay, we are aware and put on notice that this is potentially coming under a future ACDP where the house is being completely redesigned based on the medical and illness situations that have gone on here, which I even think makes it more extraordinary. So I'm just going to leave it with that, and that's it.
So to me, it just seems like a year should be sufficient to move it forward.
I'm going to make a second motion to approve one-year extension, if I could get a second.
We already have, I believe, a first and a.
I made a motion, and there was a first and a second, and mine was for a two-year extension. John's making a subsequent motion that's for a one-year, and it's seconded by Craig.
Substitute motion.
Okay, I thought that had already been seconded, but that's.
I think, ready for a roll call? Yeah, substitute motion.
Okay, so this will be roll call for a one-year time extension for the approvals. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Negative.
Vice Chair Smith?
Nope.
Chair Leonard?
No.
Motion fails. Next, we'll be doing a roll call for the substitute motion, or for the original motion, rather, for a two-year time extension. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes, get better.
Commissioner Hill?
No, in principle.
Commissioner Maza?
No.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck. Okay, so we're moving on to 3B4.
Yeah, I had a comment, I had a question about that one, too.
Okay. Do you want me to do the public?
No, I don't, oh, well, unless, do you have a public here?
Yeah, we have a card here.
Yes.
All right.
You have to open it.
All right, let's go ahead and open the hearing. Don, would you like to speak? He's only here to answer questions.
No, we have disclosures.
Okay.
And I really just have one question.
Yeah, but I have one.
Disclosure?
Okay, go ahead.
None. None.
I met with, with Don originally, a couple of weeks ago, or whatever it was.
No, I actually, I'm so sorry, I did have a conversation with Don on Friday, and he did kind of run through this with me.
My question?
Shall I? Go ahead.
It talks about, the Water District wants them to pay for the entire project that they have asked Mr. Haney, and I think others by now, to pay for. And so I just want, this is in the, in the thing here. How many times are we going to pay for this, and why does, why do we have this language here? And Don, maybe you could probably answer this most succinctly.
I'll be succinct. For the record, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant. From your lips to God's ears, Commissioner Hill, it's fairly opaque. We are working with Water District 29 to get to the bottom of this. What you're referring to is the check valve located at Topanga Canyon and Pacific Coast Highway. Yes, and it's, it's a substantial amount of money. It's not the only reason that we need the continuance, but as far as that goes, we have been engaged vigorously with Water District 29 to try to get to the bottom of it, also to get an explanation from them on why the hydrant located close to the house, which they gave us a fire flow that was adequate a number of years ago, now supposedly isn't. So we're drilling down on that, along with Caltrans, along with needing to get the city variance, who are processing the building permits. So we're ready to go, but we've got some other details that we need to work out with these different agencies in the city.
So.
And the reason I didn't answer your question, Craig, is because they can't answer the question. They will not tell us exactly who is queued up. They have basically turned to us and said, "You pay for it, and if anybody comes in in the next 10 years, you'll, you'll get a prorata reimbursement as far as that goes." To build a single-family home, this check valve, which is located directly under Pacific Coast Highway, could quite easily be over $600,000 plus, which is obviously just not tenable for somebody building a single-family home. So we're working on it.
I think it's under Topanga Canyon Boulevard, actually, but anyway. It's not, no reason not to grant the extension. I'm just like really scratching my head.
Curious, yes, sir.
Don, is this the same valve that Norm paid for?
Norm's paid for it? No, Norm hasn't paid for it yet.
They've asked him to pay for it.
But it is the same valve, yes.
Not yet, but it's the same valve.
Okay, well, you guys can just split it.
I think somebody else was asked to pay for it, too.
Yeah, there's been, we, but the exact folks that have been engaged on this, the Water District has been a little less than forthcoming in regards to that, but we'll get to the bottom of it.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion to?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Question, staff. On page two of two, this is the right one, 3B4, it says, "Staff do not find considerations cited as due cause for, under the change of ownership qualifying for commission consideration in LCP policy number five." So are you actually saying not to vote for this? I don't understand that sentence. It's the last, it's that last sentence of paragraph three, right above conclusion.
All right, which page are you at, number two?
Two, yeah, right, right above the word conclusion that's underlined.
It's the end of the third paragraph. So yeah, the, the ownership changed roughly three years ago. I believe there's also a change in applicant as of late.
Yeah, it just sounds like you're saying, "Don't vote for it." And I, Don, can I ask you why they?
Yeah, I'll tell you what we were told, basically, that the change of ownership was not considered germane by staff, but all these other considerations regarding the Caltrans, public works sending us to the city council for the floodplain variance, the Water District, those were all suitable basis for the, the extension, but the change of ownership was not. That's what was conveyed to us by the staff.
So it's, it's just abnormal to say, but the other one didn't count, right? I just wondered, it seems strange to me, but it doesn't matter.
To read the code, I could read the code to clarify this.
I have a question of Kellen. Kellen, are you okay with the language that's in there?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, can I make a motion to approve item 3B4?
Second.
Yes.
We have to close the hearing first.
And just, just to clarify, because one line in the code says, "Change of project ownership or architect and elective project redesigns do not by themselves constitute due cause."
Staff's following the law, that's fine.
Okay, so is the hearing closed?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and close the hearing.
Okay, I'll second. Well, you want to do it again?
We do have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution as is. Would you like me to do a roll call, Chair?
Please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, let's move on to 3B5. We have Justin Black or Nick Barkzakini. Okay, who had a question on this one?
I did.
Okay.
Disclosure, I sent an email Thursday evening about this and got some reply from Tyler. My concern was just that we're doing a lot of after-the-fact approval of some structures here, and that the, the geology review does not acknowledge the second unit, or the driveway, additional driveway or retaining walls. I don't know how relevant those are now, but regarding the second unit, I don't know if we want to just be sort of giving carte blanche without a geology look at a habitation on a slope. I'm just saying, I mean, and I think you said to me, "Well, it's been there for a while, but, you know, we don't know how, who built it, or how, or, you know." So, yeah.
Yeah, so, and most likely, I think we're putting together the timeline, but it, it appears that there was a structure there since before cityhood and its exact location. It appears this property was affected by the 1993 fire, and that structure got destroyed in that fire. And the owner, the owner at the time, not the current owner, replaced the structure without obtaining approvals or permits from the city. And so it was, it's been there since the 90s, this current structure. And so the only thing, the geology, it was reviewed, I double-checked with geology, they took two sections of that hill, one on that side and one on the main, the main slope. So they were comfortable with the geology, and the foundation improvements, if necessary, will be reviewed and planned check.
They, they who was comfortable?
Our geology team.
But we don't have any writing from them, right?
Well, you have an approval. And what I'm saying is, the geology report analyzed two sections of the slope, one straight down the middle and one to the right, kind of in the, in the area of the, of the second unit. So they, they looked, they re-looked when I asked, and they were comfortable with the, the geology that has been submitted. Like I said, if there's foundation improvements that are necessary, those are caught in plan check.
Can I ask a question of Kellen? In terms of any city liability here, I feel like we're not fully crossing the Ts here. If we say, "Yeah, that's fine, we've done enough of a look at the geology," if they can't come back later and say, "You guys approved us for something sketchy."
The way it was explained to me, I'm comfortable with that. I understand what you're saying, but it looks like they've crossed enough of the Ts, and there are additional checks in place.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Tyler, in 93, fire was different than this fire, that Woolsey fire, in that they put a three-year limitation on rebuild. Do we know when this was rebuilt?
It just, I don't have an exact date, but it was sometime in the 90s, from what I gathered. I don't know if it was within three years, though.
But it wasn't permitted.
It wasn't permitted, so I mean, we don't have record of like exactly when it went up.
It wasn't inspected. Okay, my second question is just technical. Is there a minimum size of a residence for a second unit? I seem to remember there, there is for guest houses, and I think there's a minimum size for.
Yeah, I think it's 850 for a single-family home. I can't recall, maybe it's like 450 or something for a, for a second unit.
That's what I'm wondering on this one, it's 429, and I think it's.
I have to, I'll have to double-check, but I, I don't, I don't, I know it's 850 for a single-family home. I'm kind of just guessing off the top of my head because we did, we just recently did the ADU ordinance, but I'll have to double-check that.
I thought for a guest house, simple, it was like 250.
No, no, it's, it's bigger than that, but, so what happens if we approve this and the house is too small? Or the second unit is too small, do they have to add 21 square feet?
Just want to be clear, John, that you're advocating for somebody in Malibu to build something larger. I just want that on the record.
Yeah, you got me on record. You got me on record. I'm just, what hap, I'm saying, if it is 450, do we start all over again?
You have less of an impact with the smaller area, and the question is, will your building official accept that? That 20 square feet plus or minus? My guess is that they will.
Well, if it's code that they can't.
There are many codes that evaluate building area. It's not just the building code. Health and safety code has minimum building areas. So there's a variety of different documents that could have oversight here.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering, for example, if you build a house under 800 square feet, you wouldn't, couldn't allow it, so.
You could, you could.
Could not allow it.
You could.
That's the minimum size of a house in Malibu. A residence, a primary residence, by code.
This is not the primary residence.
What?
This is not the primary residence.
I know, I'm saying, if there is a code that says secondary unit has to be over 450, that's, that's a bright line. So I'm wondering, my question is, if it has to be 450, then do you come back to us, or?
So I'm, I'm actually not seeing anything specifically for a second unit. The main home has to be 800, a multifamily home has to be at least 300. A multifamily unit does not list a minimum for a second unit, so I apologize. A multifamily unit does not list a minimum for a second unit, so I apologize for that. I do remember we'd had some discussions in the ADU law, that's why that came to my mind. But in the current second unit language, which is still the law of the land today, there doesn't appear to be a minimum listed.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve if, if the hearing is closed.
Yep.
I'll second.
Let's go ahead and have a roll call.
This is a receive and file, if you'd like to do it by consensus, or I'm happy to do a roll call.
All right, do I have consent?
You have consensus.
Nope, consensus, all right, thank you. Let's move on to 3B6. It is for administrative coastal development permit and for a wastewater treatment facility at 5849 Dear Ed Road.
Yeah, I pulled it.
Oh, okay.
All right, we have no speakers on this one, so what was your? Do we have speakers? This is a receive and file, so no one's here. What was your question, Craig?
All right. By way of disclosure, I had some email with Lar B.
Let's, I'm sorry, let's do disclosure. Anyone have any disclosures?
No.
Which, which resulted in, in our receiving the biological assessment via email. Okay, so the significance of this is that it starts with the fact that the seepage pits are 26 feet from the property line, which is close to the purported stream. And brief, the brief spoiler alert here, I think the remedy might be to switch to an evapotranspirative system or locate the seepage pits further from the property line. The, the basic problem here and the way it was analyzed, we have a blue-line stream. It's clearly a stream further up the slope. There's a, a marked gorge up by the water tank that comes down. It flattens out somewhat as it comes by this property. But even the biological assessment acknowledges that there's some sort of water feature here. The water is passing by here somehow on its way to the beach. Whether it's occasional, that doesn't matter, that still qualifies as a stream. The problem was the conflation of, of the status of a stream with whether it's ESHA or not. And we don't have to reach the question of, "Is it an ESHA stream?" It's just a stream. If anything is, it doesn't matter if it's riparian vegetation, whatever. If there's anything getting into it like, you know, motor oil or anything toxic, or in this case, if there are pathogens coming from seepage pits that are too close to it, that could end up getting down to the ocean theoretically. So I'm not sure how I, how I lead to a question on this other than to say that it seems like the code says you're supposed to be 100 feet back from a blue-line stream, and there are good reasons to do that, and we haven't done that here.
I believe the code also says you can be no less than 50.
What, like with a variance you made, or?
Yeah.
So nominally 100, but variance 50?
I think that's what the code says.
Maybe we could get some clarity on that.
The stream, there is a separate stream section of the LIP, different than ESHA section.
I was looking at the drawings, I didn't see a stream or even contours that resemble a stream on the property.
Well, it is weird. It, it starts out quite distinct, further up slope, and then it sort of levels out, and the, the water's going to pass through there somewhere, somehow. And the blue line on the map does go past the entire property, suggesting that at some point, I mean, the, the discussion talks about how there is a national hydrological data set, water feature here. It's portrayed as a water feature. And that's all we need to be concerned about setting back 100 feet. Doesn't matter if it's ESHA.
But doesn't it also say that, indicates that NHD feature west of the parcel does not qualify as a city of Malibu LCP stream?
They're saying it doesn't qualify as ESHA, is what they, their discussion was about. Is it ESHA or not? So this is a little bit different than the discussion we had on a property, I don't know, Cuthbert, I guess, where it was like, is this or isn't this ESHA?
That's like right up from this. I mean, and it's in the same, I don't think it's the same, might not be, might not be the same watershed, but it's similar area in Malibu Park.
That, that, this is more about, this was now about the OWTS being close to it.
Is there any reason that we can't place the OWTS further away?
That's my, my question is, could we do that, or could we do an evapo system that maybe doesn't interact with the stream?
That's a question for an engineer that's not sitting here.
I was gonna say, the biology department approved this already.
Because their rationale was all about, "It's not an ESHA," and it's not about it being an ESHA. Because I read the report.
And, and again, the stream section in the code, in the LIP, is different from the ESHA's section, has separate requirements plus.
I don't think that we want to...
A blue-line stream is a federal waterway and it needs federal fishing game approval to, once it's mapped.
I don't think as a matter of like our policy that like we should make it a point to be citing these close to the, even whether it's a map stream or not a stream. Like, I think it's smart for us not to put them close to there. And I think if we can't get more information on this, maybe we can continue it and get some more information about it and ask those people to come here.
And to do, to do, in, in other words, maybe to say, I don't know whether this needs to be part of it or not, but this wasn't a determination for a biologist to make, this was for a hydrologist or even maybe a geologist, but that would be the expert.
Rebecca.
Yeah, so that would be a grounds for continuous.
Just as a point of clarification, that determination is made by the city biologist?
Whether it's ESHA or not, that's not the question.
And whether or not a blue-line stream is present is done in combination typically with the city biologist and the case planner?
I think, and the, and the fishing game department.
Well, the criteria they, the criteria they applied here weren't sufficient or accurate. It's, it's still a stream, that's all that matters.
True.
So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to continue the item.
Can we, is it possible, are, Kellen, is it, are you comfortable with us requesting this to come back at our next hearing and having the city biologist here to answer those questions? Is that fair for me to request that?
Yeah, that's fair for anyone to request, but yes.
Having consulted with a hydrologist?
Well, I just want to, I, I just want to, if the city biologist is the person that's going to make this determination, we can ask those direct questions of them. I think that if he looks at this 10 minutes we've been discussing this, he's going to come to this hearing well-equipped to answer those questions. And I think that that's sufficient enough. I just want to be very clear, and our reason for continuous, it's solely based on that.
Well, I would like to add to that, if we can, that we needed a staff report discussion on blue-line stream requirements and stream requirements. Water goes downhill and it doesn't just stop and stay there. So obviously, there's a water course. And so we need to know, not that it's not a stream, we need to know that it's not a blue-line feature or what the requirements are, because we can't just say it's not a stream, there's water. A biologist is looking for riparian habitat on a bank and blah, blah, blah. But Craig is correct, you can't pollute a water course. And we need an explanation of that. That may or may not be in the purview of a biologist.
I think the, the overriding question sort of here, that's like, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, is like, we're essentially saying it's okay to put the seepage pits 26 feet away from what some of us are saying is a stream, or like that we've noticed is a stream over the years? So if somebody says that that's okay, then that's fine. If somebody doesn't say that that's okay, or says maybe we can put it elsewhere on this piece of property, then we should probably go with that.
I think that there is no alternative for the applicant to move the location for the septic. But from my understanding, because I get a long discussion with the city biologist and based it on the biological assessment report, she said clearly that, based on the national hydrological database, that the west of the, the parcel does not qualify as a city of Malibu LCP stream. Now, this is the question. If we trust the report, that means what we can see on the GIS, it's not qualified as a stream? Or maybe you require that a hydrologist can make this determination?
Well, with, with all due respect, I read the assessment and they based that definition of, "Is it a stream or not?" on those criteria about, "Is it ESHA, is it riparian habitat, et cetera?" That, that does, none of those need to be here for this to be a stream of concern about what might eventually wash to the ocean.
So all I'm asking for is in this, is that we get a discussion of that, because the, the code, the code, streams were specifically separated from ESHAs and blue-line streams were specifically defined. And pure physics says water just doesn't stop and then start somewhere else. So a biologist does biology, they don't necessarily do hydrology. That's the only reason why I want a discussion on that, because we don't want to pollute, especially, or this, this would go to a, what do they call it, federally protected ocean something or other, is the outfall here.
Area of special biological significance.
Which is a federal violation.
Rebecca.
So the city biologist has appeared in other meetings and has defined pretty clearly that she understands the, the code definitions for what does and does not constitute a stream bed versus an ephemeral stream, and provided very clear direction on that in some of our other recent hearings. We don't have a hydrology department that can respond to you in time for tomorrow's packet. What you'd be asking for potentially is some sort of a determination from fish and wildlife, which could take considerable time?
No, no. What if we had a representative from environmental health here? To answer your question.
That's getting closer to the truth about like how, how that stuff migrates and, you know, yeah.
That, that will give you information on what the potential is for this effluent that's going to be buried 3, 4 feet to, to actually percolate over to the water course.
I understand, that would be good, I, I think also, I would like to understand why it has to be 26 feet from the stream. I mean, the lot's obviously big enough to build a house on it, so just a very simple explanation of why it can't be 50 feet.
Okay, but Rebecca, just one more time, are, is there an issue with bringing this back for the next meeting?
I, my concern about bringing it for the next meeting is that if you're asking for staff to develop additional resources rather than having a staff member present to respond to decisions they've made, the packet is going to be started working on tomorrow and is due for publication on Friday. We also have the potential for power outages this week, in which case...
It's even further delayed. So I have no problem with it coming back even the first or second meeting, or the second meeting in December. That gives you more time. And I don't necessarily think that we need a lot more in the packet other than having that representative here, if that's kind of what you're asking.
Yeah, if we, if we're just talking about having a representative here, the next meeting can better accommodate it.
I feel that's good, and I would just add, like, to me, what's confusing in here is the sentence briefly above what I read before says, "The LCP, ESHA and Marine Resources map identifies a stream immediately adjacent to this property." And then it goes on to say that the NHID said that it does not qualify as an LCP stream. So I think it's, it's hard for me to understand, like, here are ESHA and Marine Resources maps, say that there's a stream there, but then we're, we're saying, "Oh, well, based on what we see, there's not a stream there." And we're also then having looked at that in the dry season, subsequent to a season that hasn't been really wet. So it's hard, you know, to wrap our heads around that, but hopefully we can get some more direction from our staff member that will ask our questions.
Yeah, and, and the reason why I asked for alternate site is so we have, if we determine that there is some kind of potential pollution, we, we will have an opportunity to move it, if there's a place to move it.
I don't think, they have to do perk tests and all kinds of stuff.
You can't just say that.
You can't, it doesn't work like that, so...
It's much more complicated.
Yeah, it's, I'm sure that they, they did test pits, and this is where, this is where they got it to perk properly.
It's like, we don't know that, we don't know that...
Oh, no, that, that's, that's...
All I'm saying is, we don't know that, and we can always condition it to move it to another site if it perks, okay? Et cetera, we do that all the time. We put as, the permit department does that, the health department approves it, blah, blah, blah.
I think, I think that there's a, there's a number one site, and then there's a, a backup site that is recommended if the first site fails or if they run into a problem. Is that normally the process?
Correct.
Yeah.
If I recall correctly, the backup site was even closer to the stream.
Correct.
There's got to be a reason that they could not get per, perk somewhere else. I mean, is there any way we can?
The reason is that it's going to a stream.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a reason it's a stream, so there, Craig's suggestion.
Let, let's get, my recommendation to you would be to continue this to the next meeting. We'll get a representative from environmental health and the biologist here. We'll express your concerns to them relative to location potential, some of the concerns that you previously mentioned, Commissioner Skyler with regard to, "Is this a stream or is it not? And how does that determination work relative to potential pollution runoff?"
Will they be able to answer the potential of a trans-evaporation system? Or do we need a septic guy or whatever?
She's saying the environmental health guy.
That's what these folks do, so let's see what they can do in the house.
So we, we get, we get Matt Janusik and we get Courtney to come back, or they get on the phone and we talk to them, it's that simple. Let's move forward.
Okay, yep, all right.
I, just before we make our determination on that, if you think it's better, Rebecca, that we don't make it a date certain in case there's some flexibility in there with some availability on any of those experts? Is that better direction for you?
I'm sure that we can obtain the experts from our staff. And I'm fine, I'm confident with moving forward if you're not asking for something outside of the purview of the planning city departments. Do, because this is not a receive and file, do you want to go ahead with a formal motion second?
I will make a motion to continue this item to the date that you put in the file.
December 2nd of 2024?
Great.
And who was the second on that?
Craig was. I just want to make one last comment. It's not that, you know, for these people to get to this point with this application, they've prob, they've invested quite a bit in regards to doing their reports and studies and test pits and everything that's involved in a septic system. And it's not like we can, you know, I, I would say probably the only thing we could say is, is that we require an evaporative system instead. That's about, it's not like this is easily moved around.
Well, yeah, but just remember, the blue-line streams are appealable, so if somebody wanted to appeal it, we're saving them the ability to appeal it, okay?
They still have the, the ability to do that, but, all right.
They wouldn't if it was declared not, so that's...
Yeah, okay, that's a point. All right, thank you so much. Let's go ahead and roll call, please.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're going to be moving on to 4C now, which... You guys want to take a five-minute break?
Maybe, depends how long it is.
Okay. Please don't talk to any of the commissioners, thank you. All right, let's move on to 4C. It's a coastal development permit and an application for a test well to establish water supply for a proposed development and a variance for encroachment into an environmentally sensitive habitat area buffer at 5908 Foxview Drive.
5801.
Oh, I'm sorry, 5801. All right, so this is a CDP. Should start off with disclosures. I'm sorry.
Did we hear this a little, did we have disclosures the first time or did we never even get to this?
Oh, we got to it.
We did get to it.
No, it was postponed.
But we didn't open it at all?
So we, we originally heard this back in June and then the last meeting it was continued to this one.
But the back in June, we did disclosures.
We had a full public hearing, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, right, so nothing new from me, for example.
Nothing new from me since June.
None.
I went for a site visit prior to the previous meeting and met with the applicant and their consultant.
Oh, none.
Okay. All right, could we get a staff report on this?
Yes, good evening Chair Leonard, members of the planning commission. This next item, as mentioned, is for a proposed water well to serve a proposed single family home that will come back if approved in a, in a different application. This project is located on Foxview Drive, which is a private street off of Ana Capa View Drive, and it's close to the northern city border. It's an undeveloped property and is adjacent to an environmentally sensitive habitat area and a map stream as shown here. There are neighboring parcels that have been developed with single family homes in the area and most of those have domestic water wells that support their development. The proposed well location may be the only feasible location on this lot. The LIP requires 150 foot setback from any nearby onsite wastewater treatment systems to avoid contamination into the well water supply. So those 100 foot setbacks from the nearby OWTS are mapped here in the red circles. And as you see, this corner on the lot here, the northwestern corner is the only really location that doesn't, is outside a 150 foot setback. Our geology team looked at a possible setback reduction, but because of the soils on site, they were not conducive and has a potential to contaminate the water well if it's not So as I mentioned, most, most of the properties in this neighborhood have water wells and the, the neighbor directly to the north has a water well that is in a same relative location in terms of proximity to ESHA. Just a little background here, on February 15th, 2018, the applicant applied for the other CDP for the new single family home. They received a will not serve letter from the LA County Water Works District, which means they cannot, the Water Works District cannot provide water to their home. Therefore, because the LCP requires that they need to demonstrate a potable water source on their property, the applicant had to apply for a separate coastal development permit for this water well. And if installed, will have to demonstrate with the county and with the city that it meets the potable water requirements. On May 22nd, 2024, this project went before the environmental review board and they made five recommendations as shown here. All of, all of these conditions are added. There's no recommendation tonight, but they are added to the draft resolution for your review. The only one that was not added was number five, and that's because it's not feasible because if the home gets approved, then the fuel modification will supersede this five foot maximum that they wanted to put on it. So it's not a feasible condition, so we recommend not putting it on the project. In June, June 17th, 2024, this project was heard for the first time, this well project by this planning commission. The commission continued this item because they wanted clarity on the access plan and they wanted more information about the LA County Fire Department review of the single family residence application. So this was the original plan, the original access plan that was presented to us in June. The original plan was to just go down straight from Foxview Drive all the way down to the project location. And at the time, it was a feasible alternative for the project consultants. Since then, they've provided us with this plan, which is like a V-shaped pattern indicated in orange there, that will have more lateral movement down the slope. This is preferred by the city biologist because it cuts through some of the ESHA buffer area that will be impacted by the fuel modification for the home. And so this plan has the least environmentally damaging alternatives in her opinion. It reduces the ESHA impacts. This last plan was just presented to us pretty recently. The applicant received approval from a owner's rep on the, on the parcel to the west of them. And this is for a, an existing dirt road, dirt easement that goes through the neighbor's property that will help, help this, help easier access to the site. The only problem with this location is that even though it's a dirt road path, there's a series of protected coast live oaks in this area. And if this path is chosen by the planning commission, then we recommend some additional conditions, one being that we actually get an owner authorization. Like I said, it was just an owner's rep that they heard from, so we, we want the actual owner to allow access on the site. But other than that, the three other conditions are to protect the ESHA and the trees in that area. So we would recommend adding these three conditions. One is that the applicant owner shall install temporary fencing around the oak trees and they must submit a fencing plan for approval by the city. Two, that they are not, not allowed to cut the vegetation without approval by the city biologist. And three, that the applicant and owner shall contract with a certified arborist to monitor the construction, ensuring that the protected oak trees remain unharmed and that a post-construction report be submitted to the city detailing how that construction took place that should be signed by the arborist. Over the course of this application and the single family home, we've received some concerns from some neighbors. At least three neighbors have indicated concerns with this particular project and the home, but this particular project as well. This one, they're concerned about the water supply in the general area and they're also concerned about how it's going to be accessed and they're also concerned about potential to impact ESHA. We, this project did go through a hydro geological review with our geology department and it was determined through the report submitted that it will not have an impact on the neighboring wells. There is a county process that they have to go through as well to, that will, that will make sure, there'll be a double check to make sure there's no additional impact on those wells once installed. And I wanted to mention that the geology department kind of gave me some information about how it works. And typically groundwater is recharged, so it's not like a bowl with a fixed amount of water. It does get recharged over time and the pumps shut off when the tank is full. And so based on the report submitted, there was enough water to accommodate all these wells. So we do understand the complexity of the issues and so we don't have a recommendation for this project. We do have a draft resolution of approval for you to review, just so you can get an idea of the findings and conditions that, that you would need to make. But we're here to answer any questions and our recommendation is to direct us with your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions of staff?
I'll wait for the, I'll wait for the staff, the public on it.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and open the hearing. We have, let's see, quite a few. Are you combining your time, Luke?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, Luke, Tar first. Okay, you know, you can reserve some time for rebuttals.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll reserve some minutes. I just wanted to just point out when we met with you guys a couple of weeks ago, there is some items that you wanted us to clarify more on. So that was what our goal was over the last couple of weeks, to provide the fire department approval that was provided in the planning package, the fuel mod approval for the house. As Tyler already mentioned, we already have ERB approval, which included that area at the bottom, having a fuel modification clear that ESHA. And then we also have the biologist's approval. We have a new biologist that specifically gives recommendations for this path down to the water well. And, you know, so we're just here to go over the, present those items to you that you asked for in the last meeting. We also have the, the driller here, if you have any questions about that, the water well constructor. We also have the OWTS engineer on the Zoom. And as Tyler pointed out, this is the only location on the property that it's possible between the offsets of the neighbor's systems, the, the only location for us to put our system, it's the only location on the property to put this. And so I'll save the rest of the time for responses and the owner just wanted to say one, one quick word.
Okay, is that David?
Monica.
Oh, good, Monica, okay.
Good evening, I'm Monica Martinez Bagramian. I'm the applicant and nice to meet all of you. Thank you for being here and thank you for your consideration. Thank you Tyler and all the staff who has helped along the way. It's been six years, six years plus. And I just want to reiterate that although some neighbors think that this is development for a developer, it's not. I put in the application six years ago to live in Malibu. My husband and I met in Malibu 35 years ago and we always said we wanted to end up in Malibu. And since we were not able to raise any of our children here because of the long process, we hope that our grandchildren will be able to be visiting us in Malibu. So thank you for your consideration and thank you for our team. And I think that they've solved all the issues and all the problems and all the questions that you had in your last, in our last meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Cody?
Good evening. I'm the water well expert. I've worked Trancais Canyon for a number of years, very familiar with all of the wells and the performances in that area. So if you guys have any questions about wells co-mingling, any concerns like that, I'm here to answer any technical questions required by groundwater.
And Alex?
Is Alex part of your team, or is? Yeah? Alex, you're part of, you're a part of, okay.
I was just back there, I didn't want to say. So I just, I just think that there's no problem getting the drill rig down below where you guys want, where they want to drill the hole. It's a 20-foot pad wide. It should be easy to access in and out.
Okay. Okay. All right. Is David here? David, how do you pronounce your last name?
Dowd.
Dowd, okay.
Thank you. Good evening.
No, you're not part of the team, are you?
I'm sorry?
Are you part of the team, or?
I'm a neighbor. I'm a resident of Foxview.
Okay.
I, I've been living there.
One second, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, resident of Malibu since 1989. My kids graduated from Malibu High, and I've been living in my home that I built there on Foxview. I'm not here to oppose anybody or to stop anybody from having their dream home. I used to be a mayor of Kabul, a mayor of a city of seven million people. And whether it's seven million or 70 homes, we grapple with the real issues, Kabul, Afghanistan. Yeah. And we need to answer basic questions without opposing development, without opposing progress. We're hauling water sometimes. We have a well. We have a 4,900-square-foot house and an acre of land. And we want everybody to have a house of their dream in an area that they want. But a planning commission, of course, has a very, very difficult task, and sometimes residents are compelled to ask a question. Is there anything in the horizon for people like Trancas, where we think we are stepchildren of Malibu, that there will be water there? Because eventually, when we all drill water wells, eventually there will be no water, well water. I mean, eventually, let's think about future generations. When will we address the water situation in Malibu? That's one question. The second question that just came up when I was looking at the diagram, that will probably be addressed to Mr. Bagramian. I saw that the access for the new proposed well, or the access to go and drill the well, that is going through a property that we are partly owner of. So we need to address that. No one has contacted me about that. So that's the second thing that we need to address. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then Eric Meyer? Is there a button to push on there to turn it on?
That's, how's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you for having me here. My name's Eric Meyer. My wife and I have lived at 5821 Foxview Drive in the Trancas Highlands neighborhood of Malibu for over 30 years. Our daughter attended Point Doom Elementary and graduated from Malibu High School. A little backstory on my living in Malibu. I was the chairman of the Malibu Cultural Arts Commission, and have taken an active role in my neighborhood raising funds for brush clearance, gate maintenance, and road repairs. For 20 years, I led our neighborhood in the effort to obtain municipal water from District 29. Unfortunately, this project never came to fruition, and to this day, all residents of Trancas Highlands are on wells or have water trucked in. Needless to say, our neighborhood is very water-wise. I'm here tonight to express my concern as it relates to the potential environmental impact of yet another developer attempting to build a home for sale in our fragile ecosystem. The applicant, Amit Appel Design, has just completed a large spec house down the street that is currently on the market for eight and a half million dollars. This application for a new water well will encroach into an environmentally sensitive habitat area located at the end of Foxview Drive cul-de-sac, essentially our collective backyard, consisting of old growth oak trees and a creek. The owners of the parcel in question were on the Malibu Planning Commission agenda two weeks ago, but withdrew their application for a well permit when it became clear they could not access their proposed well site through an easement between two of my neighbor's properties. Instead, the applicant spent the last two weeks securing permission without our knowledge from a neighboring landowner, and now I'm finding out it's not the owner, but a representative, to access the site through an environmentally sensitive habitat area. Should they be granted a well permit, it is clear that the Esha zone will be the access point for the house they hope to build for sale. My wife and I walk through this Esha zone on a daily basis. We are attuned to the variety of wildlife that this riparian woodland supports. The old-growth oak trees and creek are an essential part of our neighborhood ecosystem. I'm asking the planning commission to not grant the Esha variance number 24-011. Thank you.
Luke, would you like to reply? Are there Zoom callers?
No, there's no. Raise your hands. For the water well replenishment, I believe Tyler had mentioned that the city already looked into that issue with the panel. We have the water well constructor here, if you guys wanted to hear some more specifics about that. But I think Tyler had mentioned that the city already looked into the water well being replenished not being a problem. Wanted to bring up, as far as the access goes, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, our focus was just staying on site. It occurred, maybe we can come back with a couple different options. One of the options being, there's a truck at the bottom of the property, which was the option mentioned, gentlemen. It was the option we were looking into. It's, we would prefer to just stick with the option presented, which was the V shape, stay on the property that's supported by the biologist. If we were to go with that access route on the bottom, yeah, of course, the proper approvals from the over would need to be obtained. But that's, our primary access would be to stay on the property, and that's what we would, that's what we'd ask for in this approval. And as far as the, this being a development, the owner is here, it's for their house, it's not a spec home. If there's any other questions, we can.
Okay.
Go over it.
Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, close the hearing?
Closing the hearing. Question for staff, this well would, we're in Esha here. We have a nominal 10,000-square-foot development area for a house. The well is also development. It's, we've called it structure in several different documents. I can get into detail if need be. Is there any precedent for having several different development areas? Or would this all have to, does, by putting this in the corner here, would that constrain the 10,000-square-foot envelope to an area that includes this as part of it?
So before you tonight is just a well, so we, they have a development area proposed for the single-family home. We haven't really took that into consideration yet. So it's, right now, there would be no impact on development area because right now it's just a well. So that's going to be within their 10,000.
Okay, but this is structure. It's being described, the grading for it is described as understructure. The ERB has referred to it as structure for the wellhead. And in my experience, seeing similar kinds of sort of remote wells, there's a pretty big concrete pad that goes there, and there'd be some Esha disturbance of, I don't know, 20, 30-foot radius or something around it. It's, it's, it is development, and if it's in, if it can be made in the development area, then that's great, but I'm not sure, it seems like you'd be tugging the buildable area of this site down towards that corner by doing that.
Okay, Luke, you guys, you're gonna have to wait for us to ask you a question.
So, yeah.
Well, again, we haven't evaluated the development area because it's not in front of us right now. Right now, it's just the well, but what I can say about development areas in general is the language of the law says you do, can exclude a couple of things, like a driveway that meets fire department requirements. And then just as a, as a form of practice, we haven't always counted. I'm not saying we're going to do that here, because again, we haven't evaluated the development area. But OWTSs, for example, are a common thing that is a substructure that does not get included in the, in the development area. And when you read the language of development area, a lot of times, it's related to graded, graded areas. That's what kind of constitutes a development area. So that's why people can get away with having OWTS maybe on the slope. That's not counted. So I'll have to look into how other wells were counted in terms of development area. I didn't do all that research right now because we're just looking at the well, and this is the only location.
We are talking about grading, understructure grading for the well, so, yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Something to consider when you're looking at it is, I believe, is this property considered all Esha now? So they have a 10,000-square-foot limit?
It's going to be just limited to 10,000, yeah.
So as, my understanding is the 10,000-square-foot limit has to be in one spot. You can't have 5,000 here and 5,000 there and 200 over here.
Well, yeah, it has to be contiguous, but I mean, it could be like a, you know, up to shape. They're gonna have to propose it, and we're gonna have to take a look at that.
Okay. Okay, are you done with your questions?
I have other questions. If that's not an issue at the outset, then I, I could come back to mine.
This is an application for a well, it's not for the house yet.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
My confusion in reading this was we were presented in a letter with four options, and then we got drawings for three options, and now you have another option. And so we can consider any of these options, even though they're not in the staff report. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think what the applicant submitted, and Luke, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was multiple iterations of the V-shaped design, right? And then this latest one through the easement was just given to us this week.
Okay, and no, and it's my understanding that we have to take the least environmentally damaging plan, according to the LIP. And so that's why I want to ask about the, the new, there was an option three, but this, this one you showed us tonight is a different option three than the one that was in the letter they proposed in the staff report. And that is coming off of the main road going up the, where they parked the water truck. Which to me seems like the least disturbance of Esha of all of them, since it's shorter and already used, already disturbed. It's a road, we saw, Craig and I, when we went there, whatever months ago it was, there was a truck parked on it. And in your picture, there's a truck at the end of it right near where the well is, so there's obviously a road in there. Is, am I wrong? Is, this would be the least, the least square footage of Esha being?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. Skyler's after you, John.
Okay, being disturbed?
So it's going to be up to a little bit of subjectivity, I think. We discussed this with the biologist, the V-shaped pattern, because of the fuel modification in the house, would completely get rid of vegetation in that area, so so there would be, in her opinion, less, less impacts to Esha. I don't disagree that the road, it's a paved road, and I looked back at the, our 1993 aerial, so as far as cityhood goes, it's been there for as long as we've been a city. The only mitigation that I agree with her on is the native trees, because if you bring a big truck in there and they cut a bunch of branches on those oak trees without letting us know, that could be an issue. So that's why we're, if we do take that route, we just recommend that you have the conditions as we.
No, I can, I can understand the conditions, that the water truck is no small truck. This truck is, you know, bigger, I guess, I don't know.
So. We'll ask you a question in a second.
Now.
When she, when the biologist says different, less Esha disturbance, these are zones one, two, and three. You don't scrape them to the ground, it's thinned. So I don't understand how, why she would say less disturbance when your road's probably five times as long. And involves grading, I assume.
I don't think they're proposing grading. I think it's just the way to maneuver down the path easier instead of the straight shot.
No, but that, well, the straight shot is flat. This is going down a hill.
You might need vegetation thinning, but you might need vegetation thinning to create some type of path, but they haven't proposed any grading.
No, but maybe I misunderstand. Is this, are they going to take their, if we go the biologist route of going down the hill instead of up the, up from the road? How do you drive a truck down a hill without a road?
Okay, all right.
I need an answer to that.
We're gonna, the applicant's right there.
I'm asking him.
Skyler, yeah, he's.
So you're not gonna give me, you let me have an answer?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna get an answer.
I was gonna call the driller up to ask that, but then I have some more on, along the same lines of what he's asking.
I have more on his too, so go ahead.
Are you driving the drill rig up there?
Yeah, I can answer.
Okay. And remind me your first name again?
My name's Cody.
Cody, so if, how are you gonna propose, if you went down the V path that's being proposed, how do you get down there? Can you just drive right on the surface? Do you have to grade a little bit? Are you good to just drive right on?
Yeah, with what's existing on the property right now, I've taken my personal truck down to that location.
No problem.
Not a problem, able to drive out.
It's not advised that you're driving through Esha area.
Correct.
We don't want to advise that. That's not a good look.
So can I make a couple of points of clarification to help you, gentlemen? So one, this is for the well. None of the house, none of the building, anything happens until that well passes LA County certification.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay.
I think that, that we're good for now, so thank you.
No, I know, I question. What is the slope of that hill?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
But you, you think you can drive a, how big is your truck? Is it bigger than the water truck?
Think of a U, a little larger than a water truck, longer than a water truck, but about the size of a U-Haul Mover.
Okay, so it's about the same height as the water truck?
Little higher.
The little meaning?
We're probably about 12 and a half feet tall on entrance.
A lower center of gravity than the water truck.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I ask Tyler a question?
While we've got Cody. The V pattern ends 25 and a half feet away from the well, proposed wellhead site. How do you, how do you span that? Don't you have to then go another almost 25 feet to get down to it?
Yes.
And so, okay, thank you. So Tyler, when Courtney was looking at the, that, was she accounting for that further 25 feet from the V pattern to the proposed wellhead?
No, she just looked at the plans that were provided to us, so.
I don't understand why there's that fine, like the path gets almost down there, but 25 feet short of the location. And in that regard, John might be right, that coming up that little short road might make sense, but I'm confused now, though, because.
I just want to get sort of some clarification from them on what their preference is, the applicant's preference, and then the ability of us requiring them to get permission and approving something based on them having access over somebody else's property that we're not completely clear on.
That, I have some questions. I have questions about that, too. Yeah.
So I just wanted to ask Luke, is that your applicant's preference is to access from Anacapa? Or is the preference to access using the road that's been carved out? I think that the least, I was just gonna say, the least environmentally impactful to me seems accessing from the road that's there, but that's only provided you're not going to damage the trees.
And we wanted to, from the last hearing, we wanted to come with a couple of options to get, because as Tyler mentioned, there wasn't a recommendation put forward yet, so we wanted to bring a couple of options, all the information, and kind of have discussion. If, if we wanted to consider the two options, we can get, formalize all, both options and bring back. The thing is, with the bottom, we have the discussion with the truck driller, but we don't have the documents maybe to do that, so if that seems like the path that you guys would prefer, we can work on documents on our side to kind of formalize that. Same thing with the other paths, to, if these are kind of two that seem the viable options that make sense to you guys, we can put together the rest of the documents and give them back to you guys. We just wanted to give options, give feedback, and kind of just get it to the finish line with whatever option worked. And these two probably are the best two frontrunners for the options.
Probably the only two possible frontrunners, other than a helicopter.
Yeah.
Well, a question.
Guys, Dennis is up.
Well, I think going in off of Anacapa is the only way to go. Let, do everything that our senior planner has recommended and check the trees and everybody there. Let, do everything that, that our senior planner has recommended and check the trees and everybody there. And, you know, that drill rig's probably just barely gonna slide under some of that stuff, but I think that's, that's really the best way to go. Keeps everybody out of trouble and, and these guys are probably a little bit happier and we'll go from there.
All right, let's go ahead and go to Craig and then John.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Doud. Clarification, you said that you are part owner of an access that's in, which, which piece are you owner of? Is this part of what we're talking about or the other side?
Well, actually, I wasn't aware of the proposed, the latest proposal that they showed here. And I saw that the area where the water truck is being parked right now.
Yeah.
That, that is a strip of land that myself and a neighbor owns that strip of land.
Jointly?
So it's our private property and we have allowed the fire, that water truck to park there because he supplies us water. The, I, I just became aware of this fact, so I asked Mr. Bagramian to explain who else gave him the permission, because I am one of the owners. And I haven't been contacted about that yet.
Are you a joint owner of the whole access?
Yes.
You own half of?
That lot is owned by 5828 Foxview and 58 zero, 58?
I don't remember.
Yeah, that, it's one house behind us. Two lots at least I'm aware of that are part owners of that.
But it's one parcel.
Yes.
It's one parcel, Craig, that answers.
Are you? Are you open to giving them access?
I have to discuss this with my neighbor, because I, I cannot arbitrarily decide what to do and what not to do unless I consult with them. That's what our agreement has been. And I've mentioned it to Mr. Bagramian there.
Yeah, okay, can I ask a question? Instead?
Go ahead.
Tyler, there's no there's no slope analysis here, because it's not a house. But from my remembrance of going back, it's, it's not exactly like something you drive a truck down without taking your life in your hands, especially a giant truck, but it's pretty steep. Do you know what the slope is?
If I recall, it's about a two and a half to one slope, two and a half to two to one on the slope analysis.
Okay, and then when you're driving down a slope sideways, you're bent sideways. Which means you can tip over. Is there any grading involved in this?
None was proposed, that's why we didn't review it for grading, so we just go by what's.
We don't know if it's safe to drive down there.
He just told you. He said it's fine.
He just told you.
Yeah, and I leapt over the hill and he, he's got a job to do and now let me continue. That would involve restoration, wouldn't it, if you drove a bunch, a big truck down there? This is only thinning, it's not stripping the Esha.
You're talking about restoration of the Esha?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could add a condition of approval that says, that speaks to that.
Okay, now my next question is how does the water get to the top of the hill where the house is?
Pumps, I believe.
Pumps, so there so there are.
Yeah, this guy knows better than me, so I don't mean to be an expert in any way, but that's, from what I know about water systems, yes.
Yeah, so we need to consider what has to happen to get the water to the top, correct?
No, it's not part of this application.
Well, you don't drill a well and not be able to use the water.
Well, it's not, it's not too dissimilar from the Water Works District. They pump the water from PCH up. That's, that's the only reason I know, because I work with the Water District on the water tank projects. And the, the water comes from LA City through PCH and then gets pumped up to the tanks. And so I would imagine it's similar.
I understand that, but you need a power source at the bottom of the pump to pump it up. And
I've got a well, I can explain it.
Could you come up and explain it?
And I'm against the project, but I can say that we have a well and we have a pump that pushes.
Okay, when, when you got your well, did you get a permit?
I bought the house already finished.
That's a question, then I, then Tyler can answer my question.
But the engineering exists to pump the water from the well to the house.
I think, I think what John's asking about is additional development, whether it's plumbing lines or electrical lines between the house and the, and the structure. I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Well, can I, can I get an answer from Tyler?
Yeah, there's gonna be lines that, there's actually lines on their plans that run the well up to the house when, when we, when we get to that.
Okay.
But that would fall under your restoration question, too.
So, one question is, how long have you guys been working on this project for this well?
We've been working on the, the well application for two years, because we were working on the house application prior to that, and it kind of got pushed aside because of all the Wuzi Fire applications.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been yeah, it's been six years, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted, just a quick comment, we wouldn't have a problem including the, the lines from the well to the house as part of the development area, it wouldn't be a problem for us.
But that would be a future application anyways.
No, I'm saying as far as just concern of development area, we can include it, it would be fine.
Make a condition for that.
Well, it has to be.
Yeah, it's not a problem for us.
Go ahead, Skyler?
I just I was gonna ask Mr. Doud. First off, full disclosure, I went to school with your daughter, Shawna, she was awesome. Wana, right? That's your daughter?
Sorry?
That's your daughter, Wana, Doud?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's awesome. Said I went to school with her, she was awesome.
Oh, thank you.
That was it?
She went to Malibu High.
Did you date her? You have to reuse yourself?
No, 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 no. But I just wanted to say that as, and you, you would be willing to entertain or not entertain them accessing your guys' road at the bottom, where you own the land?
I personally have no problem, but I had an agreement with our neighbor. It's a common lot. And I cannot make any arbitrary decisions unless I talk to them.
Understood. I just wanted to ask whether or not you are open to that. It sounds like you're open, but pending conversation with your partner or whatever.
I've already mentioned it to them. But I have to get the permission from the other owners, so I'm not a independent owner of the lot, that's.
Understood. So, and then you also had a question about the Water District getting water up to you guys in a more permanent fashion. I was just gonna say, I know that that's sort of unrelated to this at this point, because I don't see that happening in the near future, but I'm sure your good neighbor over there, Eric, probably has more info on that than I do. Because he was the last one to really take the reins on that, and unfortunately, it didn't end up in your guys' favor, but maybe there's, maybe there's a push for another effort, I don't know.
Well, I hope a planning commission can play a major role in these things.
Imagine that your, your planning commission and your city council might be receptive to that, to helping support that.
Will come and talk to you.
But that would be up to your assessment district that you would form and move on from there.
Thank you very much.
Just so you know.
I'll tell Wana that I met you.
Just so you know, we, we had a hearing one or two hearings ago about the, the connecting pipe from Las Vergenes Water District to allow emergency water to your area, not your, you don't have a pipeline, but to Eastern Malibu, or Western Malibu. There is some movement somewhere, somehow.
Well, I hope so.
Not related to that area.
That's good news, thank you.
Now, a question for the applicant.
Do you, you have a question?
I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead, Skyler, come on up.
My question for you guys is you understand the concerns that we have over the Esha, the sensitive habitat in their area and whatnot?
Of course we do, yes.
If we go through and approve this, I think that it seems like the lower road would be the best possibility, the existing, you know, access off of Anacapa. But we can't, I don't think, require you to use that access, because that's not your property. I would defer to the city attorney on that. And I guess, Kellen, what my, my question would be is if we wanted to structure this approval in a way where like, hey, that's preferred if you can get that clarification, do we have to have that brought back to us, or can we just move forward with that being like that's Plan A, if you don't have that, then you get Plan B?
That's the way we do it.
Well, I understand that, I just wanna, I'm asking for clarification on how to form that wording.
Yes, you wouldn't need to bring it back, we can craft it in a way that it's if this, but if not, then the second option, and the planning director has a recommendation for that as well, I'll let her.
Can I comment on that?
No, we're, we'll finish up this thought first and then you can.
Sure, thank you. Both of these options will have different mitigation components, different oversight components. So that detail will come forward once selection is made and access is confirmed. So that's where you could provide a direction to the, that the planning director would be the one to approve the access and then mitigation plan for each individual site.
Go ahead, John.
What we normally would do is say if you want to do option three, you, the new option three, say, okay, you're approved for option three under these circumstances. If that doesn't work, you gotta come back, because I'm uncomfortable saying option two or option this or option that, because it's not explained. At least this road is in, it's there, we know what it is, we know what we can require. I don't know what's gonna happen.
He doesn't, he doesn't own it, though.
There are many cases where somebody needs an easement. And you say, okay, you, you gotta do this, 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 and this, and then you can do it. If you can't do that, come back and do another one, okay? But when you say, do A, and if you don't do that, do B, we don't have the data here in front of us to, in my opinion, to cross the Esha, go down a hill that we don't even know the slope on, require this, that, and the other thing. We don't have that in front of us. We have a letter that says, oh, maybe this and that. When we analyze what I perceive Dennis and Skyler and I perceive myself and maybe you guys, that it, it's pretty obvious to me, there's a road in there, there's a truck that can go in there, there's a, easy to put a rig in, et cetera. If they can't come to an agreement, then we tackle the other problem. But we don't have the data in front of us to say, you can drive a truck down that hill in that spot. This is the effect on Esha. It's not in our staff report. Our staff report is two pages long.
Go ahead, Skyler. This from previous hearing.
My, my, what my question would be for, for you guys is if we went the road that John is referencing right now, and my question is for Luke and for your, your owner, is how long would it take you to get to the point where you would get a decision for meeting with Mr. Doud and whomever else owns that piece of land to get an answer for which direction you would go if that's feasible? You can come up to the mic. Like, do you think that that's a two-month thing? Do you think that that's a three-month thing? Because I guess if we did that, we would have to sort of have this back again, Kellen, is that correct? And that would be, that's just taking that more time.
They're hearing.
How, how long would that take?
Because if it came back to December 2nd, we would need to get everything to Tyler tomorrow.
Well, you'd probably be coming back in January or February, you would not be coming back in December.
I think, I think December, so we wouldn't be able to get it for tomorrow, but I think the, the next, the following hearing.
16?
You probably wouldn't be on the second hearing in December, you'd probably be in the first hearing in January.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I just want to say that for me, like where I'm at right now, I'm uncomfortable doing that. I'd rather present both options and have a fallback. Because I think it's just taking more of everybody's time than it needs to. And I think that I'm confident that we can set the parameters that we want. Whether they're taking, and I'm gonna call them, I'm gonna refer to option A as being the, the road off of Anacapa, and I'm gonna refer to option B as being the V road that comes down. So I, I think my preference would be, would be A, and I don't know where everybody else stands on that, and I, I think that we should work towards going both waves and setting those parameters of what we would want if they choose that, and then they can work with their neighbors or themselves, figure out which direction they want to go, and they can achieve all of the things, the goals that we want them to do and the, the recommendations that we make for how they can get that approved.
So are you making a motion for that? Why don't you make a motion, Skyler?
Can I make a comment on that before you make a motion?
Okay.
And that is that how are you going to make the findings on where this road is and all this kind of stuff, and the Esha findings, and the slope analysis findings, and all this kind of stuff, to drive down that hill to put in this resolution?
I'm gonna make them right now by making my, my motion. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a secondary motion.
Okay, go ahead, Craig.
Driving up a hill, still uphill, none of these comments are correct. This entire parcel is up from Anacapa, not down from Anacapa.
Okay, so I'm
Foxview.
No, this, this whole house property is up.
We've, we've all been there, we, we've seen.
But I'm just saying, if I Foxview is above and Anacapa is below.
Correct.
Yes. What I'm referring to is from, when I say up, I mean from the well up to the top part of the pad. So. Yes, I, I want to be clear, I think we all understand the nature of the contours there, okay? Thank you for pointing that out.
Go ahead, Craig.
I still have two sort of deeper underlying questions, no pun intended really, but one's practical and one's legal. The practical one is, we heard testimony from staff that, that geology department says this is okay in terms of the burden on the water, because the aquifer recharges, et cetera. But we've also heard that the, there's a neighbor that has a well and still has to haul water up there, and there's another neighbor that has two wells on their property. And I wonder why that is, and I, I'm just hearing on the face that geology says, oh yeah, find aquifer or recharge. I'm, I'm, I'd like to hear more, because it seems like the facts on the ground suggest otherwise.
Well, everybody hauls water up there.
But no, that's.
Exactly, so.
Craig, Craig.
That's part of it. No, it's not part of it, it's not legal.
Do any of us have the information here of the depth of all of these wells? Because that's gonna be what dictates this.
That's what, what will happen is you will drill until you hit water or hit nothing. That will be the decision of the driller and the geologist if present on the site. Once you find that water, then you will start to measure the capacity of the well. The weather, the water could be under pressure, could be an arid zone, no one knows until that drilling occurs. That is then recorded information. The, the water fills up in that drill hole will provide the information to make the determination of how much water is available. And should give clarity to your question, is there enough water in the neighborhood? So you have a preliminary determination on that, but what you really want is this well, because that'll tell you what or not the house is feasible or not.
I, I get that, I get that, but I'm also concerned about if, if we already have people with wells who are still trucking water up there, why?
It, it's a secondary question to the request to test this location.
Let me ask a question to clarify that. If there's a situation, once you test the well, that doesn't assure never running out of water, because it is not legal on these properties to truck the water up there, unless you're grandfathered. Otherwise, we could just say, truck it up and build your house, okay? There's houses, a lot of houses up there that truck it up, but they're grandfathered, okay? We could not give a permit to build a house with a well that isn't adequate to continuously, 365 days a year, supply water.
Correct, at a certain rate or at a certain quantity. But that decision is with the county.
Yeah.
That decision, that determination is with the county, and if the county says no, it's no.
Yeah, if the well doesn't work, nothing can happen.
Correct.
Okay, I have a question to Tyler. Are there, are there I'm concerned about the road having to be paved, having the L-shaped thing, having to be graded to make it flat enough to drive on.
They're not proposing that.
And to drive on sideways, flat enough, without grading. Do we, and we have no idea what, we don't have any idea what slope analysis is, do we?
Yeah, it's about two to, two, two to one to two and a half to one.
Legal to build a road on, on something like that?
A road is not.
On a road, not, is it legal to drive on something like that?
Yes.
Find out when you tip over.
Yes.
It's not their call.
If the driller is saying that he's done it before, I mean.
Yeah, you have testimony on the record from the person to drill the well to say, I can break my truck down and back.
You also have testimony that he drove through Esha.
Well, we didn't, we didn't hear that, but certainly we did, but here's the situation, think of this very similar to what you do all the time on these properties with a drill rig. rig. We do this with a drill rig all the time to do archaeology tests. We move the drill rig across the property in many different areas, steep areas where a house is going to be.
Do you want to make?
Just really quick, I just wanna mention something. I've been drilling in Malibu for a very long time, for a very long time. I've been building roads probably longer than anybody here has ever built a road. My father is Eli, Eli Singer. So I'm just saying that this road right here, it's already carved in. Nobody's ever graded it. The road's already built. It's 23-foot wide. It has a, it has a.
California Live Road, right next to it.
It has a switchback, 20-foot wide, and it goes right down.
Eli, we gotta stop this. This is not pertinent to, we're only on a question, we're not open to rebuttal right now, so we have to kinda cut off the conversation. If there's a question that we need to ask you, we'll go ahead and phrase it to you.
Okay, thank you. I have a legal question for Kellen, and I think this gets into water law, actually, so I know it's a whole different can of worms.
Can we ask all members of the audience to remain seated unless the chair calls you forward for a specific response?
No, thank you. Within 100-foot radius around this proposed well, we have five parcels, two of which are developed already, three of which are not. And so I just, I wanted to double-check that, do we have any sort of duty to ensure that this, an approval now wouldn't represent some sort of hypothetical taking against the other interests, or is this a first-come, first-served situation?
This is a first-come, first-served.
Okay.
That's how it works.
And the deepest well wins.
It's always, and I've asked this many times, and I never get an answer. But it's my understanding Marblehead Land Company owns the water in Malibu. Do we have any, can we require that they actually prove that they have the right to take the water? Because I know, for example, in Boncel Canyon and a lot of other, well, Point Dume, I can't drill a well, okay? I don't own the water.
I'm pretty sure they've already provided recorded documents to verify that they own the water, they own the water rights. The city would not process this application if they did not.
The city has processed many applications where we never required them to provide the water.
The county, county has the last call.
No, I think we can put in a condition that they have to prove that they own the water.
Ask, ask them.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, Norm, do you know anything about proving?
Yeah, we have LA County approval to drill the well.
Now, I know, but do you own, do you own the water? Have you given LA County a document that says you have water rights?
I mean, LA County approved us to drill the well. It's LA County Health Department, they approved the permit to drill.
I know, but that's, you can drill an oil well and not own the oil. Do you own the water? Does your deed say, I have water rights?
I would have to check that, but I can't imagine.
I'm gonna ask for that as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty, the whole neighborhood has basically been stealing water then.
Well, you have it, we are a government agency, we can't authorize stealing water.
Well, you're, you're not. You're, you're assuming any, in court, you would say, assuming facts, not in evidence. You don't have facts to say that the water is owned by someone else, so.
I don't?
No, would, no, you don't.
So I can drill an oil well somewhere if somebody doesn't have facts to say I don't own it?
There's recorded documents.
That's not what I'm saying. So no, I think this line of questioning is far beyond what's appropriate here. And second, the city approves the city process. It's up to the parties themselves to be responsible for those issues, so it's not on the city to go out and check some assumed company owns water or something like that. So unless there's a document that you have that says under this piece of property, they own that water, you're, this is just a hypothetical.
Well, how is that any different than owning an easement? We just had a question, I had a continue because there, a question about easement ownership.
I'm going to strongly recommend that we stick to the facts of this case and not that some random party owns water in this matter that we don't know about.
It's not a random party. They own 14,000 acres in Malibu at one point.
Again, I think it's irrelevant to what we're talking about here.
It is? Okay.
Skylar, did you wanna make a motion so we could, I, it seems like we're starting to go around in circles here unless there's any further discussion that has not been covered.
Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I do have a copy of their grant deed, and just for clarification, the only exceptions reserved that they don't have rights to are minerals, oil, petroleum, espaltem, gas, coal, and other hydrocarbon substances under said land.
There you go.
That's all that, those are the only exceptions.
Just don't come back for an oil well.
Those rights in that area are owned by the Runyon family. So in any event, what I would like to do is make a motion to approve this application with two options. The first option is going to be what I want to refer to as Option A, which I would, if I have consensus, would be the preferred option for access to the well site. And that would be off of Anacapa Road. And I would put in there the requirements for Option A, that they have a letter from the owner of the road, or the owner of the land where the road is on, that permits them to access that road to drill their well, that they have a plan in place for not cutting any of the oak trees, and that they fence off the oak tree. So I would refer to that as the oak tree mitigation plan.
Skylar, can we use, just use the ones that Tyler listed that were required by the?
He listed three.
I think he listed three. Well, I wrote down four, so I don't know, which was also an arborist, so maybe those are comboed out in there.
It was three for the protection of the tree, but then the other one you mentioned was for to get the owner permission, so.
So, that's what I was going through, was those. And that, that report be provided to the city based on completion of the well.
Question under that motion?
A question, go ahead.
Yes, this is the preferred.
Correct.
So if, if the other two, if the property owners give them permission, they do not have the choice to just pick the other one randomly.
Correct.
Okay.
So again, this is the preferred, what appears from the evidence is provided is the least environmentally impactful. So then, if that option is not viable, that they, and I would like this, this option to be, well, I guess they have a timeline in which they have to complete this. So if they don't get 1A, they go to 1B, and 1B would be following what's referred to as the V path, that's listed on ATA-1.0, with no grading, to drill the well. And that any disturbed areas of larger plants in that area of access are restored. And also that any lines that are feeding the well, whether they are plumbing or electrical lines, one, are run under the soil, and two, involve any mitigation of the area that's been trenched or dug up, to be restored back to its current or natural state. Second.
Can I?
Go ahead, discussion.
Did, you want to make a friendly amendment?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay.
I would like to state that your second one includes, that it's part of the development area.
Okay, that's, so I'll accept that. So just to be clear, if we're going with Option B, that the area of trenching and the area of the well and well equipment are considered a portion of the development.
Okay, and then this.
With either option, right? Isn't that kind of the point?
Yeah, with either.
The lines and the well area, development area, would be applied to either Option A or B. Is that clear, Tyler?
And then, and then my second is the question on, is, there's this 25 feet where, that is missing in this, this road to the well, where the other ones go down to the well.
I have, so if Option B is the only viable option, just needs to clarify, look at, any part of that access road down there needs to be restored, so I don't think it matters whether it's 25 feet away or the road slides a little bit, the access road.
I'm just wondering how you get down, down there.
No, I'm saying with how they get down there, they need to restore that landscape.
Skylar wants, Tyler has a. I just have one concern about, is there a time that we wanna add between Option A? Because the only thing I can say is like, if there's like a, you know, a situation where they're, they're in talks, but the talks take three years, I mean.
Well, so I think that this application has a time limit on it in general, right? So they have three years to figure that out and get it done. If they don't get it done in that three years, then they don't get it done.
I guess I was more concerned with, how do I determine that they?
Are making progress?
We're moving to Option B. Yeah, because if I keep hearing.
If they don't make progress and move to Option B, then they don't get a well, and they can't build a house.
Why don't we answer his question by saying they've got a year to decide between A and B, or to get A approved? It sounds to me like the residents would prefer that.
We can answer that question within 30 days.
I know, but nothing happens in Malibu in 30 days.
Especially Christmas.
I just wanna, if we put a time limit on that of one year, are you comfortable with that?
Very comfortable.
Okay, so you're comfortable with, if you, you would have only, only up to one year to get through Option A, which is the access off of Anacapa Road?
Yes.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that, Tyler?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Can I add one thing from the legal? The way I understand this, they can only go with the alternative if the first choice does not work, is that correct?
Correct.
I think part of what Tyler was asking is how does he confirm that they are allowed to go to Option B? Do you want it in a letter form? Do you, anything like that?
I want it in a letter form that they've reached out to the neighboring applicant and that they are unable to do that, or a letter form from their arborist that says they are not allowed to access this and they cannot violently get the truck up this road to.
So written documentation from the applicant?
Correct. Written documentation from the applicant. I'm okay leaving it kind of vague, because whatever they wanna provide.
To be determined by the, the planning.
Do we need a writing from the neighbors on whom we're asking for this from, or?
Well, it's Commissioner Peck's motion. It's whatever kind of proof you.
You want certification from the owners of the property that they have permission to use the road within one year?
Well, John, I would be very, let me go back to, for clarification here for Rebecca. They just need a letter from the owner of the road portion on the bottom of that thing, which is on a separate parcel. I don't know who the owner is, but a simple letter saying you have the right to access this to drill your well. It can be a few sentences long. You know, if they, I don't know, get lawyers involved and add a bunch of more language to it, I think it's a waste of time, just keep it simple and move forward.
Agreed.
Okay.
So if it stated the owner shall pursue access from Anacapa Road, providing a letter from the owners of the access road within a one-year period prior to considering Option B?
Or just say that they have up to one year.
Up to one year.
To achieve Option A.
And the owner's applicant team understands they would not be able to pursue development until that was obtained, correct?
They're not, they're not able to build the well until they, they're not able to build the well until they come to the city and say, here's our plan and what we're gonna do.
Okay.
And here's why we're using this option.
Okay, and then I believe, but I'm gonna defer to Senior Planner Eaton on this, I believe the conditions he read into the record earlier would already provide for any sort of restoration, no vegetation can be cut without the approval of the city biologist, but you would like another, another condition included that says any disturbed surface should be restored?
The actual restoration.
The, the actual restoration language, I think, may not be in there, but I, and I just wanna be clear that the restoration language should apply to either Option A or B. Okay? And obviously, the Option B shows everything happening like significantly further away from the oak trees, but in the event that that had to move closer along that slope, you know, anything would apply that was in Option A. Does that make sense? Okay.
Now you're just getting into the ESHA, so to speak.
Okay, so is that it?
As long as everybody's gonna vote for it, that's it.
I will.
And I agree to the amendment that was proposed.
Call the question.
Roll call, please.
Okay, and.
Yes.
Option B, can I just confirm that you are saying this is page ATA-1.0, and it's a V path, is how you're describing Option B? Or does somebody else on my team already feel very confident that you know what you're talking about?
My Option A.
Your Option B.
My Option B is, what is labeled as ATA-1.0.
Dash 1.0, okay, I did have it. All right, sorry. Okay, so Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazel?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that's our meeting.
I will adjourn.
Adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.